Well, we have two.
I met somebody that knows you. I can't remember, John something or other. He was here from the extension agency.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Why don't you get to John?
Well, Jack's calling him John.
Yeah.
My goddammit.
Maybe you made it so.
Can't be with me.
Oh, Tom. It's our communications guy.
Yes.
Yeah, he was nearby.
Unless he held both parcels or if it was in the right of way because it goes over private property that doesn't belong to him, it's not in the right of way. I think it's best to do the other part first.
Travis said they were working on it or something, but someone might talk to him too.
Is that down in Centennial?
Yeah.
Didn't know they were selling off one acre lots down there.
There are very few in part of them.
Yeah, I'm kidding. Where's the swan out? Off South Side of the.
Oh, you're the one who went and looked at it. Tom, I think you're gonna have to. Don't tell Tom.
I did.
Or you're going to, like, to.
On the south side or the north side?
South side.
South side. I don't know. Who's this?
He was in Friday.
Sure was him.
And Mealan or whatever.
Yeah, Melon. Meealain, I think.
Who's he acquiring it from?
I think he's got it.
Yeah, he's got it.
Triangle.
Oh, he's already got it.
Oh, okay.
Just seems like where you're leaving the night.
Yeah.
Needs an approach.
Home is down there on the outskirts of the night.
But it's fine, it's landlocked and there's one little strip between him and the right of way. He had, um.
Who on the.
Casey, Casey.
Maybe.
His last name. Yeah. I don't know.
Okay.
There are a couple minutes. Could've been at three o'clock.
Does big clock run a little fast?
Um, I think.
A little earlier.
I think Sean puts it a minute ahead each time he winds it each week, so I don't really think he's paying that much attention to the time.
So it'll be an hour off maybe here.
Am I right?
We get to leave an hour early.
Well, no, no, no. When it gets to be winter, it actually runs slower, so we have to run it like at least a minute or two in the winter. It's not bad though because it's cold.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't know what he's doing, but running a few hours ahead, I guess.
Oil stir for something. Well, I like that it's working.
All right, let's go on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the rebuttal for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, go ahead.
We got some good rain last week.
Very.
We're out bleeding. Bleeding right now. Hopefully it'll also grab a little bit of paper. They got lots of rain.
Less than a person, they got three inches in three days.
Yeah.
So if you're all over the.
I mean.
The chivalry's aren't gumbo at all. But at least it's like that now, three inches of. So it's sold. That's cool. That's like a congregation.
That's a good thing.
I have a guy who's got a kidney injury and so I'll be advertising for a new guy.
Okay. Landover.
Well, last week we got our septic installed, so we're gonna bolster on that. The scan seems to be working great, so we're getting much down off that. I know we can probably play around this month with building some people. And then Monday morning, we lost a truck to a fire, so I don't know what's going on there. We're still kind of looking into that, see if there's something to be going on. Other than that, just great times.
Kind of weird for a truck to just be sitting there over the weekend and all of a sudden it's on fire.
Yeah, was that your newest truck or the old?
The old. The older one.
Okay. Well, that's the new one, stay there.
I don't know.
Yeah.
So someone wishes it was the new one.
Last of the lot of problems?
Yes.
Okay. You know that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other than that, that's all I have.
All right, Jack.
Uh, last week was kind of fair. Uh, went well as we could have hoped. Ran about a hundred and thirty-six animals through the, through the sale ring and they all sold and they're all at processors now, so. Yeah, it went pretty well and now it's just all wrap-up stuff and I gotta call processors this morning and see when we can get in to do our grading uh, for the carcass contest. And there's three, three hundred and sixty-ish days until the next fair. That's all I have.
Hello.
A whole lot of nodes and influx of septic permits or towards, I guess, small. Like it always happens, but we're still behind what we've been, uh, like last year. It's about all I got, not really any fires up going on, at least in Beaverhead County and I get through pretty unscathed on that.
Boy, the valley, you know, big old forest, most all we can, I don't get that.
What's up, Idaho?
Must be, must be. John?
Um, well, we have, Alexis was gone today and then Sean will be gone Friday and Monday next week, so I'll be working some weird split shifts this week. Um, Kevin's still working in the, uh, ex, old extension office, it's coming along. He's got it, working on plastering it, we're trying to see about sealing up the bricks and moving the bricks part of the wall. Not sure exactly where we're going with that one yet still. Um, we have the concrete being laid today, the second part of it will be tomorrow. The rain will also be kind of put a little damper on that. Um, we're gonna have West Electric here tomorrow to put in their wiring for the generator and then hopefully we have generator pad poured by Friday. And then we'll have hopefully the bottom we get trench dug for, um, Montana propane Energy Alliance guys and then it's part of phase one will be done with the generator, so then the rest of it will be getting the generator and moving it up, so, um, I don't know, that's all I got.
Mike?
Am I presenting today?
One thirty.
One thirty, so, um, I'll just say that today is the first day of school for five of the rural schools. Wisdom started last week and all of the schools are fully staffed. We have a new teacher at Polaris and a fairly new teacher out of Wise River. He's under emergency authorization because we just didn't get any applicants for the teaching jobs. He did a great job for us last year, things look fine. Rightly, they have twenty-two, possibly twenty-three kids out there. So they, they also hired a teacher's aide, uh, who happened to be the old teacher. Not, don't tell her I said old, the former teacher had hers and she is, uh, she'll be great for him out there. And then I'll be back at one thirty to talk about the budgets.
Thank you.
Um, I will be in Helena holiday tomorrow. Um, the Secretary of State's office is gonna be sort of buying a new, um, counting machine, so I'm gonna go up there and observe that process. It's gonna take place at the, at the Capitol, um, so it'll be interesting to watch the process of that, so. The Montana law, we cannot use any counting machines that have not been certified by the Secretary of State's office first, so that's what I need to move on.
Yeah.
It's been a while since I've been in here, been kind of a crazy summer. Winding down as far as crews, we still have a lot of work to get done. Anything we're working on, we'll do it now, I'm trying to get that wrapped up. I'm gonna do things here and there, but for the most part, it's been a pretty windy season. Pretty windy. Doing that, like, kinda windy. Keep me amazed how many times I have to say that.
You make sure you say do.
I do. Because that's usually who I'm talking to. Wind, okay. Um, not a whole lot new this week, I'm still working on the same. Flood plane issues, um, there's gonna be a couple more coming through. Lot of surveys coming in, subdivision that'll be going to you guys this, this morning. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it.
I don't know. This weekend, all our radios were down, the IP links weren't working, so I was in here Saturday, somebody trying to fix that, done, finally fixed it Monday, so that's up and running finally again, um. And a whole lot of other stuff, addressing parcels, computers, phones, people changing jobs, all sorts of fun stuff, so that's that.
You see the deal with the computer where Galvin County's radio system got ripped off in the copper?
No.
Copper's worth a lot, like, you know, there's a problem in the towers, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, that's somewhere.
Yeah, I had someone at the computer that went into that tower site and stripped it off.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'm gonna be diligent as though I probably be down here and doing the same thing, careful. Uh, yeah, fair winged, great, but apart as a spectator, you know, I get to be kind of a spectator this time, got to judge a little bit. Uh, had a great time. Uh, be working with Tracy a little bit on resolution for the redistricting, re, redistrict, redistricting. So that five times passed. Uh, we've got some, uh, court got moved to Thursday this week, we've got quite a few sentencings and we'll be geared up and ready for all the citations and everything that got written this weekend. I haven't heard yet whether or not it was overly busy, more than normal, but it was, they were busy. They were out there, a lot of, a lot of cherries and berries flashing at night, uh, so we're gonna have a busy few weeks here.
I don't know, it seemed like there was less this year.
I hope so.
So right against it this year, they didn't get last year, I don't know. Last year they were pulling up a lot more, there was a lot more cars.
Well, they were everywhere, the thing that I really appreciated about those guys is they were, they were, they're very diligent about making sure that, that things were appropriate and you know, I had never been downtown on the weekends.
Oh, really?
Just because I avoid it, you know. Right, and so I actually went down, uh, Saturday night after rodeo and just walked around for a couple hours. Saw some, a bunch of officers and deputies and, and just commend them because it's, it's a circus. You know, and I know back in the seventies and eighties, I wasn't here, but it was, you know, cowboys from all over the state, you know, and a bunch, big crew from Utes come down and there was, you know, and now it's just college kids running wild and, you know, a bunch of our way from mom and dad for the first time and they're all just kind of going, going nuts, but I, but, you know, for the most part, I, I think that there's hopefully at least one in every group that's responsible, that kind of, you know, have a responsible little ringleader and, and, uh, but yeah, it was, I probably won't go downtown anymore unless I need to, because there's not a whole lot there for me, you know. Forty-six-year-old guy walked around, I stuck out like a sore thumb, everybody was looking at me like, oh, there's a cop. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, Clint Black was great. Really excited to see some, uh, some, uh, music booked for the concert, it was somebody that I recognized and appreciated. I'm down there, so.
Understanding too.
Yeah, exactly.
Voice.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it was good. It was a really good show, so, yeah. Off and running, getting ready for cleanup.
Yeah.
And, and the lead-in act, he's kind of a local.
He's from.
He's from Thompson Falls. His dad played football up here at Western years ago and his brother is a teacher over at middle school. So Tanner is, um, kind of, and he's been here before. He did one of the dinner in the park presentations, I think, two years ago. Not this summer, but maybe the year before that, so.
I'm certain he said he's going places.
Yeah, good kid.
It was really good music too. It wasn't like most modern country music, which is just a middle-aged white guy singing rap music. Understand the lyrics, right? Yeah.
I spent a lot of time down on the streets here in rodeo, but I don't remember a damn thing about it.
That's just like the old days.
Yeah. Didn't want to move, didn't remember. That's right. Anybody else? Thank you, go ahead, have a good weekend.
Appreciate it.
The next slide, Monday, January 25th, Monday, January 25th, Public Hearing, Beaver County, preliminary budget for fiscal year 2025 comes here. And we recessed this, we closed this meeting, what the hell's the deal?
No, we just take public comment on it.
Okay. This reached commission run here, public hearing.
So, since you two are here, and honestly, in the last twenty, twenty-five years since I've been doing budgets, the public participation as of today just doubled. Because I bet you, there hasn't been two people in asking questions about budget in twenty years. It just seems different, the preliminary budgets before we set it, so that's unique, so.
Hey, well.
Yeah, and not only, that's what Mike said, the school thing, they're the same way, but we've been on a... The last couple of years, when the values went up and taxes went up so much, you know, the ninety-five statewide school mill, that whole scenario, that I reclaimed, and we figured out Beaverhead County was paying over six hundred thousand dollars extra in taxes to the statewide school mills for the last two years, with the promise that the state's or property taxes on the school district will go down. Well, they have this year, so that's why it's been a unique, the school levies, what property taxpayers in Beaverhead County are paying is down pretty significantly, which means somebody else is paying the taxes, which has got to be the state. We have not looked into exactly how they're doing, where they're doing it, but it's happened. And that's what I still say, I caution all the little school districts of the same way of that, is the guy that pays the most money into one thing gets the most say. So that's where it comes to this consolidation, and any of this other stuff that's coming down the pipe of, uh, Jackson with two kids. Does that make sense? And who gets to make that call? The local school board, I firmly believe should, the state's paying a lot of money to that school district, they get to say who gets to, or they ain't gonna get no money, so that's the dangerous part on the school. And then when we get to the assessed value, the, what you guys were talking about earlier, the appraisals from values, I think most properties in Montana went up naturally, but the legislature drove that taxable value down, so it went down pretty drastically, which always drives the mill levies up. So with that concept of the counties, of what we are legally allowed to assess, we're gonna get, we're up three point four percent in revenue in dollars. If that's a hundred and sixteen thousand extra dollars, we are allowed to tax pay for. And I figured the city of Dillon's up, which is pretty clever, because they ain't doing their budget tomorrow, but the city of Dillon, the same way, is getting what money they got last year, plus about forty-three thousand dollars more. So as your tax bills come out, and this year it looks like residential property taxes in Dillon is gonna go down, your tax bill will be less this year. But with that said, it's yours is less, and everybody's getting the same amount of money, somebody's paying a lot more, and that's gonna be where it really comes in. And Dillon in particular, county-wise, it's gonna go to the ag and some bigger commercial out of town. Ag guys are gonna have to pay the extra. In Dillon, I did one commercial property, the school's going down, but this county and this city bill's going up a little bit. There, this one little commercial property went down a little bit in property taxes. So it's the, I guess you're gonna look at the Town and Country, Safeways, Murdochs, Rocky Mountain, some of these bigger places look like that. I'm sure we're about to hear from them real quick, when they get their tax bill, because if ever one of the houses went down two hundred bucks, like, somebody's making that up, and there ain't very many people making that, so. With that said, that's all there is to the budgets. I think, I'm pleasantly surprised, I guess, that the residential properties went down this year. Next year, it changes all again, of where they rate them. If you got a house that's over three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, you pay a little extra, and if it's over mid, half a million, or whatever the number is, you pay a little extra. If you get the one point five million dollar house, you can pay a lot, so.
What happened with the quick rentals? Remember there was something, you had to have a long-term lease to keep the lower taxes, but then the Airbnb's and such?
That all happens next year.
Okay, that's coming up soon.
Yeah, does it, yeah, the four hundred dollar rebate you're about to get, or if you've applied for that rebate, started there last month, and you get that, you know, that's coming in. That's, I think, is to pay for last year's tax, to catch you up. And since it happened this fast, this year's property taxes is pretty much like last year's, except that taxable value's way down. Next year, when they start it, is when they're gonna prorate everything that's... They call, I think they're calling the Taylor Swift movement, because she done a vacation home in Rhode Island, and they figured out how to do that. So Montana's the same way, these rich houses, they're just gonna jack the prices of the taxes up on that a whole bunch, offset it for us normal people.
They did that for the ag too, coming up next year, the people that have the trophy rentals. They started taxing just houses, I guess, at a different rate than the agricultural taxes.
Yeah, the second and third houses, homes are gonna be...
It kinda hurts to people that like to have a little cabin on a lake someplace.
Oh, they don't pay for luxury.
Well, like those poor people that like to have a little shack someplace, and you have to pay a ton of money.
Like four acres on Old Candy Road.
Yeah. Last year, you guys did something with the bill, or whatever that was, for the school districts, I think it was, remember, you said, well, we don't have to raise it that much, and then the state came back and got after you and said, yes, you do, something like that. What was that amount of?
That was that ninety-five statewide school mills I talked about, that they were... In my opinion, they taxed Beaverhead County six hundred thousand dollars more than they should have, because we lost that last year. And now, bi- biannual deals.
I did a day to day.
So they did it two years in a row, so that's over one point two million dollars a year. They put in their pocket up there to start reducing the school.
Well, this year.
You need to bite it out.
Yeah. State, you go statewide by formula, school mills are tough, I can't figure them out, but anyway. All I know is, when you do the school mill, what Mike's gonna present it, is put it on my property tax in my house, it's down pretty drastically. So, I guess, I guess, as I said, you probably wouldn't caution people to watch out for local control on schools, and that's where it all seems like the session wants to keep doing at is... So, and one other thing on this too, is the guys, I know there's a lot of chatter on Facebook about the state's budget, and that's where they're using the numbers, you know, lies and figures, figures can lie, they're using all these different numbers to do it, but the biannual thing still claims up thirteen point some percent on the state budget, expenditure side. And we've been, I've been watching a lot of these counties and cities that are trying to come through with this thing. Like I said, Beaverhead County's is up three point four percent. The city of Dillon's is just under three percent of extra dollars thing. And the theory of accusing local governments of the ones that are raising these profit taxes are out of control is a little bit false. And the one big one that needs to be stated, big one, is the state legislature is not allowed to do an unfunded mandate unless they put it in the title. So when the state legislature this last year did an unfunded mandate, who pays for it? They say local government, so they're forced us to raise our property taxes on an unfunded mandate, which means we have to pass right on to you, so. That needs to be, as far as, counter, valid, and clear of these unfunded mandates. The state stopped the feds from doing, the state hasn't quit doing it, the locals, so that needs to be cautioned, I think.
How do you caution that?
How do you stop it?
Yeah, how do you deal with it?
Uh, I don't know, elections have consequences.
That's your report card, if you're pumped out, kind of.
Then you have to wait until the election, for another.
Yeah.
That's the point, too.
Dana, do you have the trophy, do you have one of each? Right up here, I think. One of each.
I suppose I was supposed to sign this, right?
Um, I want to.
I know it's a real thing, isn't it? That's why I pretended.
I don't see the Christmas party in here. That's under special gloves.
As of yet, we've not yet put public money into that whole Christmas party ever have, so, that's good. That's, as I said, the girls, now they're in this little fundraising thing you guys do.
We've been doing raffle baskets and...
This chili contest that's gonna come on.
We'll do that, yeah.
Last year.
They're pretty true business people. What could've happened to those days, the car wash days?
Oh, I don't know.
Did you mention you, your spouse was, were you there at that time? Last year?
No, we didn't.
I remember you commenting on your spouse.
Yeah, we, you and I bought tickets, and I hauled hay all morning, and flew a tire for her truck coming out of that coming, just before we got up the building, upstairs, and if it was a bugger to change, but it hadn't been off in years. The luggage was so tight, my four-pronged luggage, I couldn't even break it loose. Finally got it loose, and I couldn't break the wheel away from the hub, it'd been, you know.
Rusty home.
Yeah. Finally got it done, but I was beat, and she was too. Oh, we got a lot of hay haul this weekend, I'm sorry I didn't make the fair, but it took a load off me, boy, getting that done. I will say one thing, that...
We waited till the weather was bad.
Yeah, that amount of traffic on that road, on that Skinner Meadow Road this weekend was unbelievable. My boy, it is rough.
They go all the way through and clear out the road yet.
Somebody, I think I saw who it was, but when we left, with the semi, last local, all semi, I had to go here fourteen bales, all with the goose neck to finish up Peterson Field. When we came out of there after unloading, get that, come to that cattle guard, that, the middle place of bricks where he keeps cows, you know, on the San Sis, along the one side of the road, somebody, somebody took the calf, gets the calf, was apparently standing in front of that cattle guard, and put it across the cattle guard, and then they must've run over it, because it was laying there, we had to drive around it. I, he was a big enough calf, I started to get out to try to get him off the road, I couldn't... I, he was big enough calf. I, I started to get out to try to get him off the road. I couldn't. I couldn't do it. Somebody, so somebody killed one of these calves there yesterday, or Sunday.
It hit probably with a vehicle.
Yeah. Oh, it's, I'm, I'm, it was on the wrong side of the cattle guard. One thing, put it across. And there was, there were groups of, there was somebody in five different jeans following each other. He's off-road to be up with the big tire and stuff. I bet they were going sixty miles an hour with that little.
They fly.
Yeah.
One day.
I was worried about Peter Frick blaming me for hitting it because to drag it that far, for Christ's sake. It could've been a semi, but I, when I went through them, and they pile up right on that cattle guard. Right up, I mean, anytime you go up there, the cattle are just right around that one cattle guard. Anytime I go through them, I'll tell you what, I creep.
They're in their way to change the fence a little so they drift a little away from them. Or is the fence already like this?
Well, the fence, on the one side, the fence is probably back more than the thirty feet through County Eastman. But there ain't no fence on the other side.
Well, they could drift on down.
Oh, they, they go, that whole field is, the field, the road's out in the field basically when you get to it.
Wonder why they go down there? Is that where they're putting it?
Uh, there's water, not very far from there, and I don't know why they go there.
Shit. Before they had that summer range, there's to make us out, because we kind of work it, Christ. But we trail fast. Kind of gave it to the dogs. We trail on up country and we dump them in up there. And then when it gets cold, old brag, I said, they'll be standing at that door.
Yeah, they were.
We get up there and they're all standing there wondering why the gate don't fall out.
Time to get this gate open.
What about that gate?
That was in nineteen eighty-five.
Oh, my God.
I did. I had sixty-one Chevy Cadillac SS hardtop, little hardtop.
Nice.
I sold that thing for four hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I know, I was thinking.
I'd give it a thousand for my car.
They were hard to buy. I stumbled onto it, bought it, fixed it and all this stuff. It was pretty cool. Fixed bullet tail lights.
Those are cool.
Yeah.
And they just put the blue in the middle and the red to make it purple or.
GTO, bright lamp yellow GTO.
It's around here somewhere. I got to see the, it was in the Parkview Lot Town country, so I had to just take it. It's gorgeous on the inside. Always gorgeous on the inside.
My neighbor did that. Where is it? Back in Crystal Lake. He's got a great classic color in that picture. He drives that GTO law in town around.
So much.
We're close by, George. I think we're gonna be going, don't you?
But it's still.
Three minutes, that's three minutes and four, fast. Go ahead, Rebecca. You got the chamber, chamber update.
Okay, great. Uh, well, it's been a busy summer for the chamber. Uh, we're too busy. It's been good. We've gotten a lot done. Our Thursdays at the chamber were successful. And, uh, so we're moving on into the fall. And so brats for the brave, and I think I get sure this would be last month, uh, but, um, and I think there's a poster out there, but I brought posters. You can put it out there. Um, but that is our celebration to honor our heroes with just a nice quick lunch. We're gonna have the VFW and American Legion will be there for the color guard. And then the teen tongues from the high school will be singing the national anthem. And they'll be doing that right around twelve to ten this year because some state educators are gonna be in town for a state district-wide meeting, I guess, at the high school. And they'd like for them to come and come to the event and hear the teen tongues sing the national anthem. So I think that'd be kind of cool.
Where does that?
It's gonna be at J C Park at the Little Picnic Pavilion, where it's been in the years past. So, right, but now they did tell me that they will be taking the mulch out of the place gate there at, at J C Park. So there might be a bunch of workers there, but it shouldn't impede what we're doing for much.
You're the other side.
Yeah, it'll be on the other side of the sidewalk. So if they want to come over and get a bra, they can. They're welcome to it. So there's that. And then, um, on the eighteenth of September, we're gonna have our after-hours mixer with the Pioneer Federal Savings and Loan Association. It's gonna be right there at the bank and it's gonna be a tell me party. So they're gonna have engine eighteen and it'll be a nice after-hours on the eighteenth from five to seven. So I'll get some posters out. I'm just waiting for one more confirmation and I'll get some posters out about that. And then it is that time of year again, Halloween falls. It's just coming up. So it'll be the twenty-fifth, so it's a little early. It'll be the twenty-fifth of October just because Halloween falls on a Friday night. So, um, so we'll be doing that on the Saturday before Halloween on the twenty-fifth. And it'll be much like it has been in the past years where it's trepteryte along Idham Street. And, you know, the cool thing is right now Idham Street is, uh, about ninety-nine percent occupant, uh, occupancy of storefronts in Idham, which is really different than a lot of small towns in Montana. A lot of them are faced with being, you know, seventy-five percent occupancy or sixty even. And that's rough on a little town. And, um, we are really blessed right now to have so much occupancy in our downtown area. And I think walking through the streets, I took three social media influencers Saturday around downtown. And, um, just the street, the stores were packed. Uh, they had all kinds of people in them. So I think it was a really good Labor Day, it seemed like, anyway, from what I could come. And talking to the business owners, it was a little Labor Day for everybody. So success. And thanks again to the Dillon J C's and the city of Dillon. I have to say, thank you riding in the parade on Labor Day. Um, I really appreciated seeing all the police officers at every intersection to make sure nobody infiltrated the parade. So that was really great. And I hope they can do that for the parade lights because we'll be doing it in the dark. So it'd be great. I know last year we had several cars in the trade park parade. Not, they didn't mean to. They just, there was a gap and they just got in the parade and then people yelled at them for being in the parade. So, so anyway, it's, anyway. But thank you for the city of Dillon. Good job. Great job. And that's all I got going. Anything else? Any questions?
Anybody have anything? How was, how was the speed of the parade? Was it all right?
I thought it was really good. I mean, parades are kind of that way. You got cars, you know, you have gaps and things. But it gives the kids a chance to get, I know they're not supposed to throw candy, but candy ends up on the street. So it does give them a chance to.
Clean it up.
Get some of that, but.
Well, I tried to set the pace about right, but the dealer kept telling me to slow down because I was walking too fast.
He was in the lead with the flags.
Flags, okay, okay. Well, I thought the pace was good.
Right.
And actually I was handing out candy with that truck and, and, um, I was getting behind. And I had to like run up and get, finally ran out of candy and just jumped in the truck and rode it. Which was a real treat. But, uh, but good job. Thank you to American Legion for setting the pace, so. All in all, I thought it was a great holiday weekend.
I didn't see any of the parade.
Yeah.
Except the fire engine behind me that kept killing my ears.
Did you have earplugs?
I didn't have them, but once I did, holding back with that one, laughing back at the old boy behind me. Was, was carrying one of the flags. He finally turned around and went like this to him. That one fire engine had a sirem on it though. Unbelievable. Is that it?
And it's out. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good job.
That's probably what you do.
What do you got, Mayor?
I don't know much going on, you know. Bunch of time trying to get that pass hopefully. A mile, that, our new mail's on wheel truck was in the parade. And it's supposed to be out working today. That's about it, I think. Not too much going on, really.
Pretty fancy truck.
Yeah, eighty thousand dollar truck.
Oh, I believe that. With that refrigerator.
Refrigerator was down to what thirty-four degrees, I think, and the heater was up a hundred and eighty-five.
Really?
So they can adjust the temperatures on, so they, they can freeze stuff. They say they can freeze stuff in the freezer park, almost cook in the oven. Yeah, see how it works. Guess there's twenty baskets in the heat, heat park to put eight, eight meals in each basket, so. If ever Bass ever keeps, gets enough money to do more meals, you know, we have more room than we ever use, probably.
Will you service meals out of city limits?
We do right now, a few of them, I think.
So that'll keep them warmer or hotter, or colder or hotter?
You know, they, right now Bass says fifty meals is max they can do. So that's kind of where it maxed out. I think they're down to about forty right now.
So qualify for me.
Oh.
You just, you just ask to get it?
Yeah, they have to call in and ask, but it's kind of for homebound people, for people that can't get up. I think senior mainly, you know, if someone's in a wheelchair and can't move. You know, but it's mainly for sixty or, I don't know, if it's fifty-five or older, sixty, something like that. That's not city business, that's Bass business. We just drive the truck and pay for that.
It's nice, it's, I assume four-wheel drive, you know?
Four-wheel drive, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
Get to creeping around and parking when it's snowing and trying to get it delivered, that's a big help.
You know, backup camera on that I was worried about. It's a good backup camera. You can see anything back there, back and out.
Who cooks for?
College right now.
College, too.
Yeah, you know, that's what it is, is every once in a while we hear people complain about it. I don't know. Cafeteria food, I guess.
Oh, that's the nature of the human.
Some meals are great. Next, I guess, are.
A better known meal at all.
Yeah. You know, that's, I think the ones I'm complaining are the ones that are trying to get low carbs, no salt, no beer. You know, they're, they're getting, you know, we can't have.
They have grocery stores for them. Go buy your damn.
Yeah, so, you know, the normal thing, I think, okay. The ones that have special dietary restrictions are the ones that are complaining the most, I think.
Well, they, when you add all that, the meal won't taste like anything anyway.
Well, they, when you add all that, the meal won't taste like anything anyway.
But yeah, that's it.
Alright.
Going on, we'll get ready for next summer, I guess, start making plans for roads and sewer. And that's it. Burn dry minutes out there, pay attention, you know, you could see, if you ever drove out there before we got going, there's looked like islands up that one pond. At least now most of the islands are gone, so we're catching up on the.
Yeah.
Wasting it, so wanna be painting the landfill more, but call more up there. As Dylan grows, so does the waste.
Are you dumping stuff there at animal shelter, you know, that pond's getting smaller and smaller?
Yeah, you know, like anyone, you know, like Ari Miller, the dirt and stuff, they dump in there, don't do concrete.
Can't do concrete.
Concrete, you know, that's what it is, is if we ever do use it, you know, if it's full of concrete, we'll go put a invasion ethic, rocks and everything else.
So by acre by acre, you're getting more ground for the city, is what are you gonna do with that?
I don't know, that's, those are the old, you know, original.
Another original pond.
Dry dams or whatever, not dry, but lagoons, they're gonna fill both of them in eventually. Plus if I, you know, I'd like to put a great big shop up there for public works and get all the water, sewer, street alley, everything out there, one big shop.
That makes sense.
And get it, you know, so it's not, City Hall's not congested with trucks coming in and out.
Yeah.
And in that case, then we could move our police department down there maybe.
Oh, I should have said what?
No, out there at City Hall, because anyway, that'd be old place back where they park the cars over here.
That doesn't seem like many years ago, I mean, that thing was right there at the back of the animal shelter, man, there's.
You know, that's what it is, is, you know, like when they did in Idaho Street, they held a lot of that out there. Miller says halls quite a bit out there, it seems like, so. That's what it is, and Woodbank out there, they're doing good.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See ya.
Have a great week.
Plat for a minor sub for you guys, I'm just kinda gonna. I'm guessing that Rob kinda read this through to you?
Yep.
Okay. And that's a picture of what it is, it's basically a two lot minor sub. In a subdivision that was created before we had the subdivision planning act, it was created by a survey with a whole bunch of lots. Okay, you're ready?
Go ahead.
All right. So in background, this proposed subdivision will create two tracts subdividing lot 12 of C O S 72, a 20.55 acre tract. Into two 10 acre lots, lots 12A and 12B. Both lots will be single-family residential, the current owner is Montana Quality Builders. These lots will not be subdivided into smaller parcels. The proposed subdivision is located in the east half or the west half. And each half of section five township eight southeast west, range eight west Beaverhead County. Land use in the community area is residential, area of 10 to 20 acre parcels with some livestock grazing. Findings of fact, the preliminary plat and supplemental information have been reviewed to determine whether or not this proposed subdivision complies with the Montana subdivision and planning act, Beaverhead County subdivision regulations and the Beaverhead County growth policy. In accordance with state law, the planning staff makes the following proposed findings of fact based on local government review criteria as set forth in section 76 dash three dash six oh eight of N C A. This should be 2023. And the county subdivision regulations. Effects on agriculture, agriculture production in Beaverhead County will not be unacceptably impacted by this proposed residential subdivision. Mitigation of potential impacts to adjacent agricultural activities includes a three-year noxious weed management plan for these tracts. A livestock raising, a livestock plan, a livestock stocking plan will be prepared by the Beaverhead County Extension Agent. The city of Dillon is 3.5 miles away. Effects on agricultural water use facilities, there are no existing water rights that will be conveyed to these two newly created lots, therefore no adverse impacts are anticipated. Effects on local services, Beaverhead County will provide law enforcement. Solid waste disposal for these properties is handled by the Beaverhead County landfill. Primary access from, is from Black Tail Road to Smith Road. The internal access is Thatcher Drive. Dillon Ambulance will provide emergency medical services and the Dillon Volunteer Fire Department. Fire District Two will provide fire protection for this proposal. All indications are that there is adequate capacity at both Beaverhead County High School and School District Number 10. For any additional students that may attend in the respective schools, no adverse impacts to local service providers are expected. Effects on the natural environment, as stated, the noxious weed management plan will be prepared and approved by the Beaverhead County Weed Control Board. With the review and approval of the noxious weed plan, no potential impacts to the natural environment are expected. Effects on wildlife, there is a residential, this is a residential area and as typical with the area, rodents, ground squirrels and rabbits inhabit this area year round. Animal and deer are occasionally seen here. According to the Montana Sage grounds habitat conservation map program map, this project is not in the E O habitat area. There has been no comment from Mission Wildlife and Game as to adverse impacts. No impacts on wildlife are anticipated. Effects on public health and safety, lots 12A and B will be single-family residential use. Sewage from these homes will be true with individual onsite suction tanks and drain fields. Lots 12A and 12B will require D E Q approval and approval for well and septic drainage. No potential significant adverse impacts to public health and safety are anticipated. Legal and physical access, all of lots 12A and B will be, will access their property from Thatcher Drive. Both power, vigilante electric and telephone services, Quest now operated by Century Link are provided to the proposed subdivision from Thatcher Drive right away. Park dedication, no park dedication or payment in lieu is required for this two lot minor sub, or subdivision. There's no variance request. Conformance with the growth policy, the proposed Baldy V minor subdivision is in general conformance with the Beaverhead County growth policy. And is greater than one mile from the city of Dillon. This proposed two lot minor subdivision would be in general conformance with the county growth policy. Staff recommendations, based on the above findings of facts, the Beaverhead County land use and planning staff recommend approval of the preliminary plat of the Baldy V minor subdivision subject to the following conditions. Certification by a licensed title extractor showing the names of any lien holders or claimants of record against the land. And the written consent of the subdivision from lien holders or claimants against the land. Any and all adopted state and county requirements and standards, including D E Q approval, which apply to the proposed subdivision shall be met online, unless otherwise waived by the governing body. The final plat shall be submitted to the county planner by the developer within the appropriate, with the appropriate review fees to ensure compliance with all conditions prior to approval by the county commissioners and recorded by the clerk of the court's office. The owners, heirs, successors, purchasers, and landowners have waived the right to protest the creation of a special improvement district or oral rule improvement district to provide improved access roads to these parcels. This waiver is binding in time period no longer than 20 years after the date that the final subdivision plat is filed with the county clerk of the court and will run with the laws included in the subdivision. This will be clearly stated on the, on the final plat. Site specific conditions, access driveways when constructed need to meet county subdivision driveway construction standards for width, material and culverts and signage. Address signs that adequately identify the homeowners shall be placed at the juncture of access road driveways to the lots. Easements for utilities should be shown on the plat with electrical power provided to lots. Water tests will be run on the existing lot chloroform and nitrate levels, which will be done prior to final plat. These test results will be provided to the county planner. Signed weed management plan by the Beaverhead County Weed Department, signed grazing management plan by the Beaverhead County Extension Agent. An agreement between the developer and the fire department has placed a fee of $2,000 per lot in lieu of onsite emergency fire water source. This fee will be paid prior to final plat approval of the subdivision by the county commissioners. A letter of acceptance for the fee from the fire district is required for final plat approval. Prior to final plat approval, any final covenant shall be submitted to the planning department for review and approval. The preliminary plat approval for this period of not more than three calendar years from the date of approval by the county commissioners, the applicant may request a time extension of the preliminary plat approval. But such must be received prior to the expiration date of approval for due consideration of the right of the request to occur. Okay. So. Do we approve, uh, preliminary plat for Baldy V? Right, gross. Yeah, we went out there, it's pretty straightforward. They have one house already built, or almost already finished and another one, I guess they're gonna do another one on the second lot. The well is marked out there. Yeah.
The front page, it says these lots will not be subdivided into smaller bunches.
They're gonna stay, they're gonna stay, that's, I think that's part of the cover for that, it can't be divided under 10 acres, 10 acres is the limit. So they took a 20 acre and made it 10, they can't be smaller than 10.
Unless they change their covenants.
Yeah. It'd be hard for them to do it because like the one house is directly in the middle. This is on the road and then this one's in the back ten, so they have, they're creating an access up the same.
It would be, it'd be slippery on each.
And they couldn't even do that because like if the well's over here, the drain field's over here, they couldn't. It's a little bit different, instead of side by side, they're like front and back.
Anything else?
There you go, I didn't have anything too.
What was that noise? I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Don't have anything myself.
A lot of these, I find a lot of these 20 acre parcels are only allowing to be divided to 10 and that's it, so.
Location of the first building's location, that's covered there. Are you the author? You got anything else?
I'm the author.
You're the author of this?
I'm the author.
It reads well.
Thanks.
You got anything else?
Nope.
Okay, no? Got here.
Hope to approve.
Hope to approve. The Baldi View Minor Subdivision. Preliminary plat. Second.
All favor, say goodbye, bye.
Bye.
Bye. Most carried.
We just take your job.
Good job.
All the last ones. Thank you.